Sure, I'm happy to. Good morning and thank you for joining. I'm Ariseli Cruz, Calbright Senior Marketing Manager. Today, I'd like to welcome you to our Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Please follow along with our agenda on Board Docs. You can find the link on our website, calbright.org, under About, Board of Trustees. Today, the board will enter a closed session and will indicate in the chat five minutes prior to resuming open session. When we resume open session, for attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q&amp;A feature to request to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be pertaining today's agenda. If you have any additional questions, please direct them to our Communications Director by emailing taylor@calbright.org. A reminder, this board meeting is being recorded, and with that, I'd like to introduce our Board President, Pamela Haynes.
So, good morning, everyone. The Board of Trustees will now convene its regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Calbright. I want to go through parts of the agenda before we go into closed session. So, I would like to begin with the role call. Can you please call the role?
Yes, Hildegard Aguilado.
Sorry, I had meeting issues. I'm here.
Okay. Darius Anderson.
Here.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correa. Colm Fitzgerald.
Here.
Jolina Grande.
Here.
Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Ho.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Ilani Kounalakis.
Present.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Here.
Valerie Shaw. Yulia Tarasova. Yulia.
Here.
Los Villalobos.
Here.
And Joseph Williams.
Here.
So, thank you. Welcome, everyone, to this meeting. We're going to proceed now with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to call on Trustee Tarasova to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, President Haynes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. The other two items that I want to mention before we go into closed session would be that there are some changes in the agenda in two respects. With regard to the order of the agenda, we are adjusting it specifically on two items. One of them is an action item 4.4, which is the Report on the Audit of Financial Statements and Reports on Compliance. And then, item 5.4, which is the Working Learning Innovation Alliance MOU. It's within the Information and Reports section of the agenda. Both of these items are going to be moved behind our faculty report in the constituency group reports. So, that's item 6.1 on the agenda. So, these two items will be moved behind those. And that is in order to accommodate both the auditor's ability to give that presentation as well as we have invited presidents and chancellors that have participated in that particular item. And so, in order to accommodate them, we are pushing that presentation back behind 6.1. So, with those two changes, I would like to formally do the president's report, and then we will hear from our CEO. Let me just say that I am choosing to welcome in 2021 regardless of what happened on January 6. I believe that the glass is always half-full, and I'm an optimist. And I believe that with the new administration coming in, with the work that's happening across our country relative to changes in Georgia, who folks never thought that would happen, our schools looking at trying to open up in the near future that we have a lot to be grateful for. I believe in the hearts of Americans. I have to. I choose to, and I believe that we can handle any challenges that are before us if, one, we unite, two, if we collaborate, and, three, if we trust to work hard together on both the solutions and the opportunities that are presented before us. I also want to speak just for a very quick minute about two items that we are going to have presentations on because I think they're extremely important. One of those items has to do with with the presentation having to do with our learners and who they are. I believe the presenters are from Census. And I believe that they speak to who our adults are, who are in our programs. They are a majority women, caregivers, having families, working, whether it's full-time or part-time. And they have told us who they are and what they want. They are very pragmatic about the education and the training that they're looking for. And I believe that Calbright is positioning itself and has positioned itself to speak to those particular needs, one of training and education, and the other of support and allowing for flexibility for these individuals who really aspire to make a better life for their families to be able to do that. I also want to speak for a really quick minute about where the state is in this work. And sometimes, I know that we see ourselves on the cutting edge of so many things, and indeed, we are. But I have to tell you that with regard to the kind of programs that Calbright is putting forward, we are not at the cutting edge. We are lagging behind other states, states like Wisconsin, Michigan, states like Ohio, who have recognized that they have to do something different in order to make certain that those are in most need of training and the most need of how the change in work is happening, not only across our country, but across the world, has to be done. And so, I think that as we work together to make certain that Calbright stays afloat, and I know that it will, that we recognize that this is critical work. And I know that each one of us, as we move through the budget, as we move to approve changes and look at our programs, that will keep that uppermost in our minds. So, I guess I want to end by saying that I am excited about the work being done collaboratively with our faculty, with our classified, and with our administrators. I'm also excited about working with each and every one of you on the board as we embark on both the challenges and the opportunities before us in 2021. And so, again, welcome, and I'm looking forward to 2021 from that perspective. And now, we're going to have the report from our CEO, Mignon.
Thank you, President Haynes. As Pam mentioned, it's a new year and a fresh start, and 2021 for the college really already has us accelerating forward. As Pam mentioned, the start of the new year had an unsettling flashpoint, and it stoked a lot of our concerns over what might be threatening our democratic values. But it also reminded us that we define those ideals through the actions that we take as higher education leaders. And for many of us, we only move in one direction, and that is undeterred, and that is forward. Earlier this month, as you know, Governor Newsom released a very strong budget for the state that is focused on advancing California's efforts to take charge of the recovery. And this year's proposed budget really focuses in on an equitable and broad-based recovery response to the COVID-19 pandemic. But also, and I think this is an important point to highlight, building an economy that's actually based on innovation, inclusion, resiliency. That includes critical funding for higher education and workforce development, including an ongoing investment for Calbright College. In particular, the budget proposes one-time and ongoing funding above $350 million that is specifically for supporting California's workers adapting to changes in the economy. And I point that out because it is also the way in which that work is being asked to be done through greater collaboration and coordination across California's higher education institutions and statewide, local, regional workforce partners. That approach, that demand-driven workforce approach that is consistent with the approach that we're taking is what can help California train the workforce of the future, particularly in key sectors that we are focused on in healthcare and technology. We are absolutely ready to do our part to be purposeful and collaborative towards those solutions with a focus that we have that's unique to us, the community colleges, which is really acutely around advancing racial equity and economic inclusion. And I just want to point out that it's connecting our work to growing efforts of other higher education institutions as well, the direction that workforce development and economic development is headed, and also what we're increasingly hearing from our community leaders, our civic leaders, and our local political leaders, our industries, employers, unions, everyone is stepping in this direction. And our conversations and research from across the state confirm that what is needed from Calbright are both those statewide and regional approaches and engaging a broad range of partners that have that common understanding, specifically the shared challenges that we're trying to solve, but also how we can identify and build very targeted solutions that can be easily tested before expansive implementation and scale. This is essential as educational opportunity. We know this is at the center of this future that we're talking about, and that innovative approaches like Calbright emerge as this very necessary tool to make our public systems work better, especially for those segments of our communities that were otherwise excluded. This is particularly critical as we prepare in the recovery to make sure that our systems are ready because they're going to be taxed beyond what their current design limits really allow. Yesterday, many of you know, we honored the legacy of Dr. King and looked forward towards the growing momentum towards racial equity. Tomorrow, we will have a new president that will confront the challenges we face to build back better and to carry our country forward on a long road that is likely around an equitable recovery. And today, we'll discuss what lies ahead as we advance our work and our progress as a college. Our work in the second half of 2020, as we ring in the new year, was really focused on moving Calbright forward in several critical ways. And these are efforts that are actually beginning to yield really significant results. We established an organizational structure, assembled talented faculty, staff, and leadership teams that brought new capacity to carry forward the next period of the college's efforts being defined in our strategic vision. The most recent of these additions include strategic leadership over robust efforts to develop communications, outreach, and marketing to prospective students, to communities, and to employers. That's on the agenda today, and our new Chief Fiscal and Administrative Officer, who will be beginning on February 1st. We also have doubled down on student success and strength in key parts of our student experience, our leadership team, our faculty, our staff, new deans that we have in place focused on enrollment, instruction, and counseling. They have taken the time to work together to develop, to train, and to implement a new model for integrated learning and support that's addressing key touchpoints where students need stronger engagement, whether it's help navigating the system-wide application CCC Apply or career support, connection to additional supports and resources in their communities, or coaching from instructional or counseling faculty. That work is now accelerating with the addition of a new Senior User Experience Designer who is actually really digging into this question of how our student interactions and our communications with students can really be best structured to model how to support strong student outcomes. This idea, though, that student voice and experiences are at the heart of the college's efforts to build new programs that are working for today's learners. As Pam mentioned, these are learners who are older, often women, managing childcare and other family responsibilities. They're balancing work and an increasing number of compounding pressures. Already, feedback from students and patterns that we've seen in enrollment and progression are the things that are guiding us towards making key improvements and supportive students. That integrated student support model that we're talking about has been guided, that development, by best practice research from the Community College Research Center, but also, and perhaps more importantly, what our students themselves have been experiencing and voicing, including input that we've gathered from student surveys and our strategic vision process. We know that online is often a preference for adult-seeking educational opportunities because of the flexibility and the autonomy it offers. And some of what you'll hear from Census today will highlight some of those preferences. But we also know that that online learning is best enhanced through greater opportunity to create community and to foster social belonging even in an online environment. And this is actually an area where we'll be spending more time this spring. On the agenda today is a position that's actually dedicated to student development programs and activities, those services that are designed to elevate the distinct voice of students and to engage them and provide them opportunities to provide meaningful impact into Calbright beyond what's already been done. That's in the context of advancing student success, but also, unique to our model, it's about career readiness and enhancing their labor market outcomes. And that is the kind of support and community that can carry them through their first job, their careers, post-training. We've heard from a number of Calbright students about their interest in being more actively engaged and in being really a part of shaping and improving the experiences that their fellow students have. And that includes participation, and interesting participation, in the development and formation of an associated student body organization. Once hired, this position will also focus to work with this committed group of students in the coming months. And I wanted to thank Yulia and Co., in particular, and other statewide student leaders for their efforts in support of Calbright and its students as we head in this new direction. We also are building out key community college features of the college in a way that is reimagined. Along with our work with students, we are welcoming new leadership coming from our dedicated and creative college faculty. Michael Stewart is now serving as Calbright's president of the recently-formed Academic Senate, and he is fast becoming an important thought partner in our efforts to rethink new and collaborative ways to enhance the role of Calbright faculty and the role that governance plays in the college's innovative model. And so, I wanted to thank him for taking on that responsibility and also have us welcome him to that new role. Along with strengthening internal governance, we've also begun the collective bargaining process with our Calbright Faculty Association represented by CTA, including the initial sunshine proposal from CFA shared with the board, which will be taken up along with Calbright's Sunshine Proposal at our February meeting, and will be engaged in the first steps of inter-space bargaining training later this week. In addition to the org development efforts, we are really focused on how our work is value-added to solving some of the emergent challenges that we've highlighted facing California workers. And one area that I'm particularly excited to share with you that really exemplifies our evolution of the program model is defined by skills design research work underway with a critical frontline employer partner. So, we are working with Cognizant in the area of IT and ways in which the sector is rapidly expanding with the rising demand for automation. Cognizant is a multinational technology consulting services provider that is rapidly expanding in the U.S. And we are uniquely working with Cognizant as a prototypical employer partner. So, they're helping us define how to meet the needs of the broader IT employer community. And the research is actually unlike previous approaches we've seen out there because it leads with worker voice alongside employer and industry projected skills demands and perspectives. So, it's defining not just single certification, but the skills required for individuals to enter and grow into new occupational roles. So, here, we actually have finished the process of interviewing successful employees, their managers, and trainers to identify the skills and competencies it takes to be successful on the job. For key occupational roles, that includes systems administrator, business and data analyst, and developer roles that can carry an individual across many different agile IT systems. So, this is the kind of work that helps us build and launch a new array of pathways that we will soon be bringing before the board, and that can help transition individuals with more diverse backgrounds into new technology careers, including enhancing their competitiveness for a way that they often enter these employer opportunities, which is increased opportunities for workplace learning and applied learning. Perhaps more importantly than anything else, it's a model for other developments that we will apply then to our approach in healthcare and other sectors where the voices and the skills of frontline workers actually feature in defining and validating skills that are needed for job readiness. So, how we can demonstrate that somebody is ready for that employment opportunity who are seeking both new occupational roles or who could be seeking upskilling in the role that they currently have to keep the jobs that they already have. These efforts around new models and pathways actually are consistent with what we understand about the dynamism that we're seeing in the labor market while building programs that are flexible enough to respond to shifting demand. This is what we can offer students to best position them for the labor market with the time that we have with them. You can probably hear my excitement for this work because it will lead to, it will really be focused on enhancing the quality of new offerings. And it's heightened beyond the excitement of the success of developing something truly new and novel and distinct that can be broadly scaled. But it's also, to me, really about the value that we can add to the collective efforts that are better positioning our CC system against this rising tide of enrollment competition that we're seeing coming from outside by institutions that are costlier and riskier, but sometimes perceived to be more convenient and accessible than many of the current educational options out there, particularly in the public sector. That value generation began with early collaboration work that we started with Baker Field and with Compton College, and it's kind of ever-growing. New collective efforts will be defined by our work with a number of key districts, working under the umbrella of a Working Learner Innovation Alliance. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. We're lucky to be joined by three remarkable chancellors in our system in that partnership work. And the value of that is really about having an understanding of the common problems in that student lifecycle, including those that are central to the CCC system application that can actually undermine college's enrollment efforts and, by extension, have an adverse impact on equity communities. These efforts with system partners are along a broader range of collaborations that highlight the college's approach to addressing some of these more vexing problems that we're seeing as the pandemic recedes and the recovery begins. We are answering that call, and as our knowledge and capacity grow, so too will our impact. I will stop there, but I will just tell you that I am not fatigued anymore. I am thrilled at not just the progress we made, but how the team is coming together in order to really accelerate our process in the first half of this year.
Thank you so much for that report. Before we go into closed session, I just want to note that we have all of our trustees here with us at this point. So, if, Ariseli, if you have to call their names again in order to officially bring them in, you can do that. But Member Shaw, Trustee Shaw, Trustee Escobar Correa, and who am I missing? Trustee Perry are all among us, and please accept my welcome for this particular meeting. We are now about to go into closed session.
Madam President.
Yes.
Before we go to closed session, can I ask Ajita a question about her report?
Absolutely.
This is Trustee Waves. Thank you for the report, and congratulations on all of the progress that you all have been making. And I know you have Stuart Knox on your team, and he's well-versed in the workforce space. The question I had is that California Labor Secretary Julie Su recently commissioned a study to look at how they can invest in cybersecurity apprenticeship training. And just wanted to find out if you all saw any opportunity for a cross-system collaboration with the Workforce Agency around some of the training that you're going to be doing.
Yeah, we are very aligned with the understanding of key areas that the state has identified in terms of also, you know, the kind of high-growth, high-road jobs agenda. And, you know, our development effort would be consistent. I do see lots of opportunities, whether it's on cyber or the broader set of automation changes. These are things that should not be uniquely things that Calbright does, but there are opportunities for many system campuses to participate in that in a coordinated fashion. And so, we are, you know, it's an area that we're also exploring, kind of following on from this work that we're doing with the Cognizant and the broader IT automation space.
Thank you, and, you know, I think the workforce boards could be, you know, funding you and putting some money into the pot, too. So, I just want to add that.
Yeah, we've been talking in a number of different regions in the state to better understand what some of those opportunities and needs might be to test some programs out. And there's a lot of places under that scenario that it would be great to work with a local community college partner, some of whom we started to identify. But I think, as we'll talk about in the Walia work a little bit later in the agenda, I think we are also inviting input and ideas for what some of those proposals could be from those regional areas. And the district chancellors in the regions that we're partnering with will also be an important part of defining that vis-à-vis the regional consortias and other regional organizations of the strong workforce programs. So, I think there is a lot of opportunity, and I think there's also a way to lift up some of the existing infrastructure that we have in the system to add that kind of margin of excellence around new innovation.
We also have a question from Trustee Hall.
Thanks, President Haynes. Ajita, quick question. There's so much going on, and you've only done the tip of the iceberg right there. And maybe it's in the materials, and I just haven't seen it. But I'd be interested in seeing almost like an executive summary of where we are. How many students do we have? How do those students break down into the different courses that we're offering? How many faculty do we have? What's a geographic breakdown of where people live? When can we expect the first job placements, the graduates? Is there a timeline that you could provide us of where we are now? Kind of a snapshot of who we are, where we are, and then where we'll be a year from now, or two years from now?
Yeah, so I'll say two things about that. One, we can certainly provide the current snapshot picture, and we have all that. So, we can do that and follow up to the board. The other thing I mentioned is that's a core part of what we're doing through the vision development process. So, that's the space in which we can clearly lay out exactly what the next, not just six months, but the next three years will look like for us.
Okay, but again, that's the second part. I just want to see where we are right now.
Yeah, we can provide you that and follow up. Thank you. We'll send it to the full board.
And we have another hand up. Trustee Anderson.
Ajita, congrats on the report. I was really impressed on all the things that you've done, and I think you're making great progress. My question to you is, who have you been articulating all of this information to in the legislature? How has the response gone as you've given them either monthly, quarterly updates?
Yeah, so I think Jenny, Jennifer Johnson, she is our new Government Affairs Director, and she has just started a lot of those conversations with key members of the legislature. And in next month's report, we'll provide a more robust legislative update. But But Jenny, I would love for you to just give two minutes and introduce yourself and talk a little bit about the conversations you're having in the legislature.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Anderson. Jenny Johnson, nice to see everyone. I started the last week of November, really excited onboarding, but it was a little quiet with the holiday. So what I'm trying to do right now is reach with both sides of the aisle. So the, with the respective higher ed education committee chaired by Member Medina, as well as the Senate Education Committee. So working with the chairs and vice chairs, as well as the budget sub. So reintroducing myself in this role, having worked with many of them in my prior role. And as you know, Member Anderson, there's a number of new legislators that we need to get from comfort to confident about what we're doing. So different approaches based on those that we've worked with to date and those that we need to introduce ourselves. So happy to provide an update as we're well getting through the legislative and budget process.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I'm glad to have you on board, Jenny.
Thank you.
I think we're all happy to have Jenny on board. So welcome, Jenny. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to, we're, we're going to go into close, into closed session. The board will discuss one item in closed session, item 2.1 regarding public employment under Government Code Section 54957 subdivision B. Before I go in, I'm, I'm wondering if there is any public comment on the closed session item? And I'll need help to see if, if there is. I don't see any, any hands raised on this issue. When, right. So when, we, we expect this closed section, session to be relatively short, not to exceed about 20 minutes. So with that, we will leave this area and we will go into closed session. See you on the other side. So Ariselli, can you tell if all of my colleagues are back in to open session? Or are we missing anyone?
I believe Terry's checking in. I'd recommend that Terry call roll one more time just to recognize the members that joined.
Yes, I was just looking.
Perfect.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Darius Anderson.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Present.
Colm Fitzgerald.
Here.
Jelena Grande. Jelena. Pam, Pamela Haines is here. Kevin Hall.
Present.
Lieutenant Governor Ilani Kounalakis.
Present.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Here.
Valerie Shaw.
Here.
Los Villalobos.
Here.
Julia Tarasova.
Here.
And Joseph Williams.
Here.
I think we were just missing Jelena. Oh, I see Jelena.
Okay. The board has concluded its closed session discussion and the board did not take any action on enclosed session. So now we're going to go to the consent agenda. And this is what I would, I would ask. I can see all of your faces and that's, that's wonderful and I'm, I'm so glad. On our, on our, on our action items, if you would please, if you're making a motion or if you're second, seconding it, most of you already do this. If you would note your, at least your last name for the record, just in case we, we, we miss who actually is doing it, doing the, the motion and, and the second. So that would be helpful. And so with that, the board will move on section three of the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from consent for discussion or for a separate vote?
I found a tiny error in the minutes. I don't want to remove it, but I would suggest it be corrected. I think on behalf of Trustee Hall, who may not have noticed, in the minutes under item 5.2, the, the motion is made by Jelena Grande and is seconded by Kill Hall. K I L L.
No. We don't want that. We don't want that to happen. So.
Tom, I saw that and I was, I was just waiting for someone to pick up on that. Thanks.
It's the nickname.
Yeah, we'll, we'll call it an innocent mistake, but we will correct it for the record. And with that correction, can I get a motion to approve and a second? Motion to approve first. So moved?
Second.
Okay. So that is Grande and Rawlings. Grande for the, and Hall, I'm sorry.
Monday and Hall.
See, I told you I was going to get this mixed up.
Trustee Colm Fitzgerald has a question and I wanted to make a comment about the agenda, the consent.
Certainly. Trustee Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a quick comment about the consent agenda, but I'm wondering if I want to make a comment about an item, do I have to pull it or can I just make that comment?
You can, you can, so practices, you can make the comment either after the vote or prior to the vote. So you, you're certainly welcome to, to make a comment. Absolutely.
Okay, great. Yeah. So the, the item I just wanted to briefly comment on and, and just commend Calbright for, for taking this step is something that Ajita mentioned. Since late 2019, a couple of months after my appointment, I've been pushing very hard for Calbright to begin the work of recognizing a student body association. And today, happily with, with a successful motion of the consent agenda, we, we take the first big step and that is securing the advisor position of that student body association in the form of the student outreach engagement specialist. And, and so I, I just wanted to extend my sincerest gratitude to all the people I've worked with in, in Calbright, whether it be Tamika Connor, Aja Love, and of course Ajita herself, and all the people who are no longer with Calbright who have helped. You know, I, I think that the, the Student Body Association, you know, obviously not only is this Board of Trustees, you know, supposed to take the student perspective into account and the joint development of all this policy and, and the joint development of policy recommendations. But I, I think this Student Body Association will lend a great deal toward the image of Calbright. I think that once we are able to engage Calbright learners in the process of governance within the institution, we will see very amazing strides very quickly. And, and so I, again, I just want to extend my sincerest thanks.
Thank you for those comments, Colm. With, with that, if there's no other comments, can we take a roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Hi.
Colm Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Jelena Grande. Pamela Haines.
Hi.
Kevin Hall.
Hall. I.
Sorry. Lieutenant Governor Ilani Kounalakis.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Valerie Shaw.
Hi.
Los Villalobos.
Hi.
And Joseph Williams.
Yeah, yes.
Well, that motion passes. Thank you for that. We're now going to move to our action items, section four of the agenda. So let's begin with item 4.1, the approval of administrative appointments. Mr. Grady, can you please present on this item?
President Haines, President Haines, Vice President Costa and Board of Trustees. I'm Donald Gray, Executive Director of Human Resources and Employee Relations. I would like to present to you that Calbright has undertaken a formal process for recruiting and selection of a candidate for the executive position of Vice President of External Affairs. So we are seeking your approval for the appointment of Hannah Hankins as the new Vice President of External Affairs.
So are there any, any trustee discussion or questions on this, on this item?
This is Trustee Williams. I move approval.
Can I, can I get a second on that and then?
Darius, Anderson will second.
All right, Mr. Anderson, thank you very much. So is there any discussion on this particular item?
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
I would just like to say to, you know, everybody that was involved in this, I was extremely impressed with the application. And, you know, I think especially with everything that's gone on in the past is a very important position. And I want to say to everybody that was involved in the selection, kudos and congrats.
I can second that. Other discussion, other questions from the, from the board members? All right, then hearing none, I'd like to see if there's any public comment on this particular item. Hearing none and seeing, yes. Who's talking?
Ariselli, I was letting you know.
You're on, you're on mute, Ariselli.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
I was just letting you know there's no public comment.
Perfect. So we have a motion and we have a second. So would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Hi.
Colm Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Jelena Grande.
Hi.
Pamela Haines.
Hi.
Kevin Hall.
Hi.
Lieutenant Governor Ilani Kounalakis.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Valerie Shaw.
Hi.
Los Villalobos.
Hi.
And Joseph Williams.
Hi.
Yes.
I think that was the best vote we heard all day, Madam President.
That's right. I like, I like your helper.
Early start, early start.
Okay. Well, thank you for that, for, for, for all of the votes, including that little one. Our next item is item 4.2, which is the, which is approval of, of the addendum to professional services agreement with Lisa Baird. And Ms. Bold, would you please present on this item?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, President Haines, Vice President Costa and members of the Board of Trustees. I would like to present to you the addendum to professional services for Lisa Baird for your approval. The term of the agreement between Calbright and Ms. Baird has recently ended and the total value of that agreement to date was 95,000. This is an addendum agreement which would extend for an additional two and a half months through March 31st of 2021 this year and a total value not to exceed 130,000 and we're seeking approval for the addendum.
Do the board member, any of the board members or, I'm sorry, trustees have any questions or comments regarding this particular item? I don't see any hands raised on this one. Are there any public comment on this item?
President Haines, there's no public comment.
All right. So then can I get a motion and a second?
I'll move.
That's Jennifer Perry.
Trustee Perry, Madam President.
Trustee Perry. And can I get a second?
Trustee Rawlings will say.
Trustee. I forfeit to Bill.
Yes, we all forfeit to Bill. Trustee, trustee Rawlings, you get this one this time. And with a, a, a motion and a second, can we call the roll on, on this item?
Yes, but should we now call him Kill Bill? I mean, that's really the appropriate.
Yes, we can.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Hi.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Hi.
Tom Epstein.
Hi.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Hi.
Colm Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Jelena Grande.
Hi.
Pamela Haines.
Hi.
Kevin Hall. Kevin?
Hi, sorry.
Lieutenant Governor Ilani Kounalakis.
Hi.
Jennifer Perry.
Hi.
Bill Rawlings.
Hi.
Valerie Shaw.
Hi.
Los Villalobos.
Hi.
And Joseph Williams.
Hi.
Hi.
This is going to be the favorite, my, my favorite most part of this meeting, the echo. Okay. So we, that, that item has passed. So our next item is 4.5, which is the Calbright College. Is that right?
4.3, President Haines.
Thank you, 4.3. I got ahead of myself. The Board of Trustees and Executive Committee meeting dates for 2021. So President Mignon, would you please present on this item?
Sure. So in coordination with the Board of Governors meeting, we every fall need to adopt the schedule for the Board of Trustees meeting dates for the upcoming year. And as a general matter, these have occurred on the Monday and Tuesday of the third or fourth week of the month. And executive committee meeting dates occur within the third week, the subsequent one, largely to accommodate time in between meetings to advance the business of the college. So all you have before you propose meeting dates for, for 2021.
Are there any, any questions on this item? Darius, did I see your hand waving?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I had a quick question. You know, like we do a campus tour in conjunction with our Board of Governors, are we going to do a virtual campus?
Where did he go?
He left the meeting, it looked like. Maybe he dropped off.
Yeah. And I don't want to start to answer that question before, so that, we want him to hear the answer to that. In the meantime, are there any other questions? I'll go to Mike, my question. I want to make certain that this is, this is for you, Ajita, that we vetted this with most of our colleagues on the, on the board. Do we have any objections to any of the dates or the times of, of at least the executive meetings that coincide? Do we, do we vet that part?
I believe that we did. So if there, if there are any conflicts that we need to be aware of, they can be surfaced now, but, but yes, I think we did do that, that outreach to get to the initial date and also coordinating with the Chancellor's Office on the blog meeting.
Okay. Will somebody let me know if we get trustee Anderson back? Do we have him yet?
I don't see him, President Haines.
Well, I, I.
He's there now.
Oh, good. We held off discussing your. Oh, good. We held off discussing your question, trustee Anderson, so. And you were asking about whether or not we were going to have sort of regional.
You know, some type of interaction with the campuses. You know, about either, you know, some type of shared program that's going on. Is there going to be anything other than just the meetings in this form?
Got it.
The one caveat I would say is if the Board of Governors resumes in-person meetings at a site location, which has been done, you know, we usually, you know, we usually go alongside that. So if there is a meeting held in Southern California, it's a little bit hard to predict exactly what the in-person meeting schedule obviously would be for the Board of Governors, but we can track that.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? And is there any public comment on this item? Areselli, can you see it?
President Haynes, there's no public comment.
Thank you very much. So with that, I'll take a motion and a second to approve this item.
Agüinaldo, I'll move.
Second?
Who's second?
You, Lilia Tersova.
Thank you, Lilia. All right.
I'm not sure.
Can, can, can our, can our?
Non-voting member second. I'm just curious. I don't even know.
I don't either.
I believe they can, but I think we want to have advice.
Namita, do you know? Namita still with us? Oh, there you are.
Madam President, it would be wise for us to have the motion be seconded by someone who's not a non-voting member.
Who? It is.
Who is?
Who isn't, who is a voting member?
Yes, who is a voting member.
Okay, all right. Then can I get a second? Sorry.
Second.
Who's second? Oh, Colm, thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. Can you please call the roll?
Hildegard Agüinaldo?
Aye.
Darius Anderson?
Yes.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa?
Aye.
Cullen Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Jolena Grande?
Aye.
Pamela Haynes?
Aye.
Kevin Hall? Kevin?
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Ilani Kounalakis?
Aye.
I believe Jennifer Perry had to step out of the meeting, but I'll call Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos?
Aye.
And Joseph Williams?
Aye.
The, the motion carries. We are at 4.4, but this is a reminder that 4.4 is being moved behind 6.1. So we're going to move on to item 4.5, which is the Calbright College Board Policy Revision. And Ms. Connors will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Madam President Haynes. The Board Policy 5010 revisions reflect the capacity around the California Adult Ed Program consortiums in partnership with local community colleges to offer adult learners an opportunity to obtain a high school diploma, GED, or the equivalent. The revisions are also calibrated to Calbright's program pathway offerings and potential employment opportunities. So we're asking the Board, given our mission, for the following revisions, and that is admissions will require a high school diploma, GED, or the equivalent. And that we admit residents, California residents over the age of 18. You're muted, Madam President.
I am muted. That's my problem. You can read my lips. Do we have any, any discussion from any of the trustees or, or questions?
Trustee Grande has a question.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Board President Haynes. I was wondering what faculty involvement or coordination consultation was involved, if any, in these proposed revisions?
So our faculty have actually been working on the administrative procedure, which is also part of, but before we can move on our administrative procedure, we need to have a motion on our board policy. So we also have an AP for 5010. And we have an AP committee that's been also working on this. So faculty have been involved and have weighed in on this as well.
Did they happen to mention the number of working adults we have who do not have a GED or their equivalent, who could be disparately impacted by this particular policy?
So what we, what our faculty concluded is that we would want our adult learners to take advantage of the opportunities available through the adult ed consortiums to obtain their GED. There's all type of benefits, including employment, but also access to federal financial aid by having your GED or the equivalent. And so we want to work in partnership with the transition specialists to ensure that our adult learners have that opportunity and to also come to Calbright and pursue any of our program pathways in conjunction with that.
Thank you.
Ajita, did you want to make a comment? So are there any other questions on this particular item or in any further discussion?
I have a question. What is the equivalent of a high school diploma or a GED?
So right now we have another type of exam that adult learners can take that is also verified as completing the requirements for high school.
And who, who creates that exam? And is this some kind of?
It's a high set and it, and yes, and it's with the adult ed programs.
Is that what all the?
Of California.
Do all the community colleges use that?
So we have 71 adult ed consortiums that work in conjunction with our local community college districts that offer the high school equivalent exam.
Yeah, but what I meant was do all, like the other 114 California community colleges use this same exam? Is this standard across the system?
So the colleges themselves, some offer the GED equivalent and high school diploma equivalent exam, and some offer it at their actual adult school consortium partners.
But yes, it is available.
They all accepted, yeah. So it's okay. So this is essentially making us consistent with all the other colleges?
This is essentially because we are not currently affiliated with an adult school. This is actually increasing the capacity of our adult schools to serve this particular population of learners.
Thank you.
So I, then, I do have a question. Would it be accurate to say that while, while there are programs and affiliations with adult ed programs, that someone who has neither a high school diploma or a GED or has not taken the test can still enroll as a student in single classes, individual classes, or is that, do we turn anyone away based on not having a GED or high school diploma or not taking the test?
So this is what our board policy will be updated to reflect that we will require a high school diploma, GED, or the equivalent, and for our adult learners to be over the age of 18.
So I guess, I, I guess what I'm asking about, I, I understand that that's where we're going, is, is that a requirement of all the other 114 colleges?
The ed code says that they may, shall admit, and that they may admit residents who do not have a high school diploma or who are under the age of 18.
Clarification. I, I need a little further clarification. Okay, so you used may and you use shall, but it confused me. So what may they do and what shall they do?
They have open access. So they shall admit anyone who applies to their, their college. And what we're doing is really calibrating our admissions policy based on our program pathways and our potential opportunities with employers.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Is there other questions? Are there other questions?
Yeah, so what you were getting at, I think they used to call it ability to benefit. Didn't those rules change and how does what you are proposing align with AB 705?
AB 705, it has to do with assessment, so, which we no longer do for math and English. And it allows students to enroll in college to, to have a self-guided enrollment into college-level math and English.
I thought under AB 705, like prior experience, so if I'm coming in and I'm saying I don't have a, a high school diploma or I have an equivalency, then I thought that that prior experience applies to, am I, am I misunderstanding it?
Yeah, no, AB 705 was about access in terms of assessments for math, English, and ESL. This admissions policy is, is not related to that particular legislation. Maybe you're talking about, well, it's, it's a different policy.
Yeah, I guess I was just thinking about all of the documentation people use to justify being placed in college level. And so if I don't have a, a GED or something like that, but I, I get what you're saying. So I yield, thank you.
And then just to clarify, our, our students are not going to be taking math and English, at least transfer level, in, in, in most of these programs that's sort of on the traditional campuses.
Cam, can I take a comment really quick?
Sure.
Yeah. I think all, you know, the thrust of the questions, I think, is a question of, you know, are we in some way limiting access by including this? And I think further in the agenda, we're going to see, and Ajita can certainly speak to this. Most of the students at Calbright already have some college-level experience. And so I think what I'm hearing is that to further bolster their ability to get a job, this is a necessary step and that it really isn't going to impact access because many of our students have already completed high school and have, you know, at least a couple of college courses under their belt, but they maybe didn't complete college. And so it's certainly, you know, is going to make them more employable to have a high school or equivalency.
I'm sorry to ask another question, but what if somebody graduates from high school at age 17? And they would be ineligible to take a Calbright course?
Until they're 18 years old, yes.
And what's the rationale for that?
The rationale is again based upon our potential employment opportunities. And we are currently not doing any type of dual enrollment as well.
I'll add just one other clarification. So part of this cleaning up of the standard is also connected to the process that we're going through relative to accreditation. And so as we get evaluated against our, our mission for accreditation purposes, you know, throughout the statute, there's an acute focus on our target population, particularly not just as adults, but adults over the age of 25, some non-traditional students. So I, I also just want to point that piece out because we're not going after a target market of traditional-aged college students that are the bread and butter of our sister colleges, but a distinct population that is an unserved market. So this is also consistent with the focus population that we have and the way that will, our mission will be viewed relative to the process around accreditation.
That's helpful. Thanks.
Are there any other questions from the Board of Trustees? And if not, we're gonna, I'm going to ask if there, oh, Jolina.
I did, I, I have one additional comment I'd like to make just to park it out for the future. But Jolina, if you'd like to go first, I'm happy to follow.
I was just wondering if we might consider expanding our application of the term equivalence to include maybe a set number of college units completed rather than predicating it on a high school diploma, a high set score, or a GED. Could we, since we do, much like our Vice President of the Board mentioned, have students who have some college completed, but not a college degree, would we consider opening up that equivalency to be maybe nine units of college credit or 12 units of college credit so that we don't necessarily distract individuals in a pathway over to a GED or high school diploma completion when they would already benefit from our instruction without having had a high school diploma, but may have having had college credit completed?
So trustee Grande, that does not solve for the issue once we're accredited and offer title for funding as well. So that population that we would potentially admit with nine credit hours of, of, you know, college-level credit, still would not qualify for financial aid and can potentially.
Sorry, Speaker, I didn't mean to cut you off. Please finish your thought and I'll follow up.
And, and potentially have less opportunities in terms of employment opportunities and some of our employer potential partnerships. So we would really want to encourage and help that individual through the transition specialist and liaison at an adult school achieve that particular milestone.
One helpful thing that actually might score the difference that I actually think, this important recognition that folks are bringing up that there's a potential ability to benefit that could be aligned with labor market opportunities that we may be precluding. I think the equivalent language, if you look at the text of the board policy as well as the description in the, in the item talks about the equivalent. We illustrated an example of the equivalent, but perhaps we can address it in the course of our APs to also provide flexibility for ability to, to benefit. And I know the federal definition changes for purposes of financial eligibility have actually shifted over time with respect to ability to benefit. And I would imagine that we would potentially see a, a conversation around ability to benefit at the federal level relative to workforce programs in the next few years. And so I think we would like to stay aligned to that, to that definition and those requirements based on our eligibility for both federal financial aid programs and potentially real workforce programs. And so I think that having a broad board policy around equivalency, which gives the general thrust in direction of the, the, the admissions requirements being individuals who are not in the adult basic ed category, I think would be sufficient direction for us to address and make adjustments and create flexibilities through the course of our APs if the board is comfortable with that.
Well, I don't see any other hands up or comments. I do want to find out if there is any public comment on this item.
President Haynes, I don't see any public comment.
So can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I move approval.
Trustee Grande?
Anderson's second.
And Anderson has second. So can I get a roll call vote on this?
Hildegard Agüinaldo?
Aye.
Darius Anderson?
Yes.
Amy Costa?
Aye.
Tom Epstein?
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa?
Aye.
Cullen Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Jolena Grande?
Aye.
Kevin Hall?
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Ilani Kounalakis?
Aye.
I believe Jennifer Perry is still absent. Bill Rawlings?
Aye.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw?
Aye.
Blas Villa Lobos?
Aye.
And Joseph Williams?
Aye.
Thank you so much. We're now going to go to information reports. And this is, this is meaty information. So I certainly want to make certain that everybody gets all of their questions answered. But we do have to end this meeting by twelve noon. So work with me, folks. Just work with me. The first item, five point one, is the report on contracts and purchases. And what do I have? And Ms. Stahlheber, is that, am I pronouncing the last name correctly? Oh, good. Thank you. Is going to present on this item.
Okay, this is our monthly report of contracts and a summary of expenditures for the month of December. Any questions?
I have a question. What is Be Clear Public Relations?
Is there a manager?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I didn't, I didn't know if a GED wanted to speak to it or not. That is a communications, just a communications group that Calbright has worked with before and is working with us now and in support of, just in a short term, I think about three months just through when Hannah gets started with us as well.
How does that relate to Mercury?
So we have actually paused the Mercury contact for the past few months. We paused that in early fall and would like to have that restarted as soon as we have our strategic direction coming from the new VP of External. Largely, if you recall, the Mercury contract was focused on direct, in-depth community outreach, including with prospective learners and employers. And we really, I think, require some strategic direction from, from a, from a senior-level leader in the organization in order to manage that contract. So they are, we are holding that contract until we have Hannah on-boarded and she can start ticking in. We'd like to make the best use of that, those contract dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions from the trustees? I don't see any, any hands up. Is there any public comment on this particular item?
President Haynes, I don't see any public comment.
Okay, then we're going to move to item five point two, which is the Census presentation on learning analysis. And the presenters are Ms. Johnson and Ms. Cruz.
Thank you, President Haynes, President Menon, and trustees. I'd like to introduce Jose Villa, President of Census Agency, who will be presenting a deeper dive of prospective learner profiles for us today.
Thank you, President Haynes. Good morning, everyone. This is Jose Villa from Census. This morning, I wanted to go through an overview of the findings of an exhaustive qualitative and quantitative research study that we conducted on behalf of Calbright, looking at the learner population. One of the drivers for this research was, this new round of research was to better understand some of the impacts of COVID- nineteen as well as having a better understanding of some of the regions, learners in the different regions throughout the state. We also did conduct a study on employers, which we'll brief the board on on a future date. So today's focus will be on learners specifically. Next slide, please. Wonderful, thank you. So just as a reminder, our research study was conducted over the summer and it was in the form of a survey of roughly twelve hundred learners. We also had a qualitative research component, which was, consisted of eight online focus groups totaling forty participants, again, representing participants from throughout different regions of the state. For the purposes of our study, we, learners were defined as adults ages twenty-five to fifty with some college or less, who were interested in obtaining a degree, certificate, or some additional job training. So that was basically how we screened individuals for participation in our study. And that's how we're defining learners. We purposely implemented geographic quotas to make sure that we had a significant, we had significantly, statistically significant samples of participants from the Central Valley, from the Inland Empire, and rural areas throughout the state, in addition to the large urban coastal population centers, which tend to dominate market research studies like this. So with that in mind, this is just sort of an overview of the learner profile from our, from our study. Most learners have some college or trade school. Their average income is fairly low by State of California standards in terms of coming in at around thirty-three thousand dollars a year on average. Most are employed either part-time or full-time. About a third are out of work or stay-at-home parents. For those that are working, their average job tenure is pretty low. It's about three years. Demographically, our learner population skews female, younger, and primarily non-Hispanic white as well as Hispanic. And I just wanted to mention briefly, from a media consumption, we have a lot more data, but these are very much digital media consumers, spending most of their time consuming video content on platforms like YouTube and streaming services. Next slide. In terms of previous education experience, one of the most telling characteristics of our learners is their past educational experience. Many, many have experienced educational trauma, as captured by this quote from one of our focus group participants. And I'll just read it to you briefly. Just the thought of being in school and having homework again. I mean, I was stressed. I was really stressed. So to get any kind of degree, I'd have to really, I'd have to take a lot of classes to get a degree. I really don't know if I want to. I'm good in school, but I just don't like school. And this was from a participant aged thirty-five to forty-four in a rural region. And as I mentioned, most has started but have not finished post-secondary education because life happened. Forty-three percent indicated that they actually signed up for a community college class in the past. And by and large, this is a population, again, our learners, who have not yet found their calling. Fifty-four percent indicate that they're still trying to figure out their life passions. Many indicate that one of the primary barriers pursuing additional education is a lack of interest, a majors of interest to them or that they have a passion for. Next slide. In terms of COVID impacts, they've been broad but uneven in terms of the, some of the different groups within our learner population. Not surprisingly, most of our learners have been impacted significantly by COVID. But interestingly, only eight percent are working from home. So these are not folks that are working in the types of industries where we would expect a lot of working from home. Forty-eight percent indicated that they, that they are very concerned that they're going to need to get new job skills to remain employed. About twenty-three, about a quarter have either lost, had their hours reduced, lost their job, or been furloughed. And a pretty significant percentage of them, almost forty percent, are concerned that they're going to lose their job in the next six months. However, there are some really disparate impacts that we found from our research in terms of COVID, depending on what region they're in. So for the coastal learners, they're most concerned about losing their jobs in the future. And I'll talk a little bit more about this in a second. The rural learners, they are not, not looking to change jobs and they're not as concerned about losing their job in the future. And then the Central Valley and Inland Empire learners are the ones who are most actively looking to change jobs now. And fifty-two percent of learners indicated that they're looking to take some college classes or seeking out some job training as a result of COVID nineteen. Next slide. We asked a lot of questions and we identified some interesting gaps in terms of kind of where they used to work or currently work in terms of industries and where they want to work. These gaps really, the gaps that exist between experience and interest, really. About a quarter of the learners who are still working, you know, who have not lost their jobs, are working in either retail and apparel or customer service. And then for those who are not currently working, who either, who either lost their jobs because of COVID nineteen or had already lost their jobs previously, a pretty significant percentage of them are working in three industries, or had worked previously in three industries: food service and restaurants, customer service, or retail apparel. Interestingly, though, when we look at the industries that they indicated interest in, entertainment, customer service, and technology were the top three industries of interest, followed by hotel travel, healthcare, and banking and financial services. But there was a pretty long tail of interest in a variety of other industries. Next slide. In terms of changing jobs, learners are definitely, the majority of our learner population indicated that they are looking to make a job change, fifty-nine percent. They want new jobs that meet their needs, but, but they feel that they like the resources and confidence to get that, the type of job that they're looking for. In terms of, I mean, we, in terms of what they're looking for in a new job, income, not surprisingly, is the primary objective, increased income, but also benefits. And we were very surprised to find out that really, work-life balance was really a top criteria for them. And you'll see kind of how this fits into sort of a broader narrative about our learners in terms of some of the, some of the challenges that they face. They lack qualifications and confidence. Their biggest barrier to leaving their current job, for those that are working, is financial. They don't have the savings. They're concerned about losing their benefits. And moving costs are daunting to them. And although eighty percent are willing to work remote, which was a pretty high number, only forty-eight percent are willing to move for a new job. And there's an interesting quote here. I kind of had to struggle with not enough experience and never given the opportunity to show what I could provide, my knowledge I could bring. So that kind of led me into a more independent field. Again, this kind of captures some of the lack of confidence that we find with our learner population in terms of getting into the types of jobs that they're looking for. Next slide. So as I alluded to earlier, we conducted the research in a way where we had statistically significant samples of learners in the different regions of the state. And we found some really interesting differences among learners in each of the regions. So starting with the rural learner population, as I mentioned earlier, most of them do not want to move. They're very happy living where they live and they're happiest with their current work situation. This is the group, this is the region that's been sort of least impacted by COVID. And interestingly, this is a population that's most interested in hourly employment versus a salary position. When we shift over to look at the Central Valley and Inland Empire learner population, this is the group that's most willing to move, most motivated to move for a different job, again, most actively looking for a new job, and would be most willing to, sort of interested in going to school to get into a new field. When we look at the coastal urban, which is obviously, this is the biggest population of learners, they're the most concerned about the future and future job impacts, again, around COVID. They're concerned that they're going to lose their job in the near future. Most are also, they're also looking for new jobs now. And, you know, the interest in the entertainment field came out of this group, not surprisingly. You know, big, big percentage of them being in Southern California was sort of the center of the entertainment industry and looking to get into that field. Next slide. In terms of going back to school, so again, there are many learner barriers to continuing education. And a lot of them are sort of perceived barriers that they have. And based on our research, we feel that there's a new type of online, the new type of online education will help address some of the barriers that they perceive to going back to school. Not surprisingly, our learners are very pragmatic about education. They see it as a means to end, to an end. And, and most of them do not think it's realistic to go back to school for them right now. Again, cost is a big barrier, but also time and schedule. And then, and then they indicated that there's just no fields that they're interested in in terms of the types of programs they might look to go take. Again, this idea of work-life balance is a major issue for them and balancing family commitments is really, really important to them. So they want to feel in charge while balancing their family commitments. And interestingly, we found when we, when we asked them about online education, they, they associate online education with some very positive attributes. Things, things like affordability, convenience, personalization, and flexibility. Even the potentially negative association, non-competitive, is actually a positive trait that we found because of some of the educational trauma that they've had in the past. And we feel that this is something that we could build off of. Next slide. So in terms of Calbright and the competition, so there's, there's some initial skepticism about Calbright, but it really presents an opportunity to overcome some of our competitors' advantages. So first off, it's clear that, that from our research, that the for-profits are effectively targeting our learner population. As we can see from the awareness levels that we were able to ascertain from our research, which directly correlates to ad spend. So these are some of the biggest advertising spenders in terms of for-profits. And we could see the level of awareness among our learner population was highest for those who spend the most. When we initially shared with them sort of the idea of Calbright at a, at a top level, there was initial skepticism. It was too good to be true. There was a lot of skepticism about free. However, once we shared more information about Calbright, a lot of positive attributes started to bubble up. And there was a particular strong interest in some of the unique attributes of, of Calbright, skill-based training, mastering skills at your own pace, working from home. And in particular, the associations with the State of California and the community college system serves as a, as a strong brand attribute, something that made people feel comfortable and actually was a really strong attribute for the program. Next slide. So lastly, you know, our, as part of our research, we had a very large sample size. We were able to conduct a cluster and factor analysis, which resulted in the creation of a learner segmentation schema. And we identified three segments, so sort of three subgroups of learners with the greatest need alignment with Calbright and that we feel are not currently being served by the existing sort of educational system. And these are the three segments that we're recommending to prioritize and focus on marketing and outreach efforts on. The first segment, we're calling them the working caregiver. These are all primary targets. This is the largest segment, represents about twenty-one percent of the learner population in the State of California. These are primarily working or stay-at-home parents of children. We see heavy rural representation in this, in this segment. And this is a group that's very interested, very drawn to online education to improve their future. Some of them are not ready to go to school or think they're not ready to go to school right now, but it's something they want to do in the very near future. But the, some of the attributes of Calbright lead them to believe that maybe they can do it now as opposed to wait until later. The second segment, priority segment, is what we're calling the aspiring professional. This is a segment that sort of skews primarily male, and it's the second-largest segment. And essentially, this is a group that's looking to transition from sort of blue-collar trade-type professions into, like, or manufacturing into more white-collar professions. We see heavy representation from the Inland Empire and Central Valley with this group. And again, tends to be a little bit older, but one that is also very interested and very drawn to some of the characteristics of Calbright. The third segment that we're recommending to focus on is, we're calling the justice-involved individuals. This represents about eleven percent of the learner population. And as the name indicates, this is a population who has previously been incarcerated and is having a hard time because of that incarceration and some of the challenges that's presented to them in their life to get into a better, better-paying job. This is the most financially-challenged group in terms of segments. Heavy representation, again, in rural and Central Valley as well, and tends to be a little bit older, but kind of evenly balanced between male and female. So these are the three segments. We have deeper dives into each of these segments in the following three slides. But this is the group, these are the folks that we are proposing to focus our efforts moving forward on. We think we're going to have the most success and have the most impact. And with that, that completes my presentation.
Thank you so much for that. I do have trustee Agüinaldo, who has a couple of questions. And if there are others, please let me know.
Thank you, President Haynes. Jose, thank you very much for this presentation. It was very comprehensive and exactly the profile I think we were looking for. My first question is directed to you. With respect to slide five, I was a little bit surprised and disappointed that we didn't see more of an interest in the legal and justice and specifically access to justice field. Could you talk about how those particular categories were identified? If that was something you suggested or if it was free-form texts? And if there were areas, maybe, that had an interest level of less than five percent, like one percent, that just didn't make it on the list?
Yes, absolutely. So, yeah. Yes, absolutely. So yeah, let me, let me answer your question from the, from the end there. So yes, there were some that didn't make the list because there were a number. We, it was a pre-populated list of industries. We basically went with the largest industries in, in the state of California in terms of employment. We did also have a free form, so individuals could, if the, if the options were not listed, there was a sort of an open-ended question where we did have a variety of different industries that folks could list. And we can provide that data. We don't have it, obviously, for today's presentation because there's so much data there, but we do have the open end, and some folks did list legal in those.
I'd, I'd be interested in seeing that. Thank you very much for making that available. My second question is for Ajita on slide nine. I'm very intrigued by the, the psychology of affordability and the psychology of paying for college. And I know that this is a forte of yours. And I was just, I, I wanted to get some of your insight on the skepticism around free and whether we needed to make some changes to our own model to accommodate that psychology.
Yes, so I think free is a great marketing campaign, and the concept of universality has, has a lot of research that shows that it's like an attractive message to, to, you know, people like it, people like the concept. It's why all of the major presidential candidates did some version of this proposal in their, in their campaign efforts. But when you actually get to the level of individual decision-making and when you consider how somebody is evaluating the choices of whether to pursue or not, that, that moniker of, you know, deferred debt or debt-free or, you know, the way that a lot of the for-profit structure, their marketing materials is, is, is kind of hiding the ball on it. You can enroll, you can start, and you don't have to pay until later because they're priced to Pell Grants and the loan limit. And so I, I, I think it's valuable to revisit our messaging around affordability versus free. One, because it is, you know, people believe that you don't get something for nothing. And their experience, especially if they've had an adverse experience with, with a for-profit institutions where they were put through their marketing churn, they will be even more skeptical to evaluate future educational opportunities in that way. And so I think we have been playing with the, with the idea, with the words that include low to no cost. So the objective there being as we, as we grow, as we gain, as we move into apportionment, as we become eligible for the BOG fee waiver and those types of things, that they won't see a cost to them, but they will, they will not think it's too good to be true. So I, I do, I have spent a lot of time on the language, and I think it, it does matter how you, how you communicate what the, you know, what the thing is in a way that's convincing and that motivates an individual to really see it and evaluate that as a, as a meaningful opportunity. I will just, lastly, I'll say, I think there's also a lot of research that talks about how nominal costs are skin in the game from individuals is actually ineffective tool in terms of persistence. And so I think we, you know, we'd want to consider any future fee structure in relation to, to that understanding and that research that actually points to the fact that it's not just about getting somebody in the door, but about keeping them engaged and having that skin in the game can be a significant part of that as opposed to a barrier.
I have a question from trustee Anderson.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Two questions. One, the twelve-hundred-person pool that you surveyed, clarify how you found those and, you know, what were the qualifications to be selected? And then secondly, Ajita, when we look at, you know, the overlay between our programs that we're currently doing and the survey results, you know, how you, how will you be using that information and what do you plan to do with?
And this is the last part of that, but I'll, I'll let Jose take the technical question. Oh, sorry.
Information with regard to the.
So I think we got the first two parts of your question, and maybe we can have Jose start to answer the technical pieces around the survey instrument, and then I'm happy to address the, now what do we do with the insights associated with where individuals have identified demand or how we would characterize consumer demand? And then maybe we can go to the third question that we cut out on.
Yeah, so just to answer that first question, the, the way that we recruited participants for this, both the survey and the focus groups. So there was twelve-hundred-and-sixteen on the survey, and there was another forty on the focus groups. We basically used a third party to recruit individuals that met our criteria. They had to live in the state of California through the geography. They had to have a certain income level, which we actually adjusted based on region so that they fit within our target age, twenty-five to fifty. And in terms of previous education, we, we screened out anybody who had, had more, that, that had actually completed any post-secondary education. So you had to have the most education you could have done was started but not completed, and then everything less than that. So we had individuals who were only high school degrees, some that didn't even have a high school diploma. And then the last one was the geographic quotas. So again, we just made sure that we had, and this is what took us the longest to make sure that we had individuals in these different regions. Because typically, when you do surveys and you do focus groups in California, you pull people from these, from LA, San Francisco, San Diego, the major metro centers. And we purposely wanted to recruit individuals who were outside of those heavy population centers. So we had a sort of nice representation of the state, and we can dive into some of these regions that often get missed with market research. So that was the criteria.
And was it all voluntary? Were they volunteers?
Yes, they were volunteers. And I think there was a small compensation for, there was compensation for the focus groups because we asked individuals to spend time with us. I think they spend on average about ninety minutes with us. And we have video transcripts of all that and all the details on that. So we did, there was much more compensation there. There was a small compensation for those who participated in the survey, who met certain, the criteria.
Yeah, and I'll just add, this is methodologically consistent with the way that this type of survey work is done. And we were intentional about the survey sample size and especially over-representation, as, as they mentioned, in particular regions, so that we could be sure that the results were representative and generalizable across the populations that we're trying to target. And so it is, it is, it is quite a rich body of information that we have and that we can reliably use to transform into insights, which leads to your second question, Darius, which is, you know, it's interesting when you uncover survey information like this, especially around consumer demand, what people report and talk about is often what they have had exposure to. And so it gives us insight into understanding, not that we completely say, okay, now that entertainment is a key interest of many of our target populations, we start to develop entertainment programs, but we have to understand what the, what the choice set is and the current view of the choice set is for these individuals so that we can introduce information either about Calbright or Calbright's programmatic offering to also give some additional career exposure and understanding of how they could, what other information could be used to evaluate the choices that they actually have before them. And so, you know, I think there's, there's a couple of levels. One is instructive for us to understand where people's heads are at in terms of the choices they're making. Two, and we've seen this with things like the for-profit colleges, you know, a, a popular thing a while ago was gaming in terms of programs of study. And so you had a number of for-profits that spun up a bunch of gaming, gaming programs, and then, and then kind of shamelessly marketed gaming programs, even though there were no jobs for gamers. And so it's this delicate balance between responding to information about consumer demand and also being, understanding our role as an educational institution to be, to also shape that broader choice set in a defined way so that individuals can see other opportunities in front of them.
So before I go to the next question, I want everyone to know we're about five to seven minutes behind on, as a result. So shorter answers, sort of questions and shorter answers would be helpful in this. But, but thank you so much, Mr. Villa, for that presentation. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to you offline about the two questions that I have. But board member Hall, you had a question?
Thank you. Jose, really interesting. It's a lot of information to absorb. I, I had kind of a question comes out of left field maybe, but if, if we look at our top competitors that you've listed, University of Phoenix, ITT Tech, Arizona State University, American Career College, Academy of Art, does the name, did you find that the name Calbright had any impact, either positive or negative, on people's perceptions of, of what we're offering? And I'm asking that because the, the competitors seem to, you know, throw in the word university or their names just better known, like Arizona State University, American Career College. Does, does the term Calbright, and maybe you don't have an answer to this because you don't know, but do, do you think it impacts our ability to recruit in any way?
So we, we, we did ask questions that they'd never heard of Calbright, so there was obviously very, very low awareness of Calbright. That's not surprising. We did not really go in depth to understand exactly how the name, how they reacted to the name. Instead, we presented the participants, this is particularly with the focus groups because we spent an hour and a half with them. They, the focus group participants, when we shared some of the attributes associated with Calbright and some of the previous marketing materials, that's where we got some interesting reaction. And I would say the most positive reactions we got were, one, the association with the state of California, and two, as I mentioned in the presentation, to the, being part of the community college system. Both those were very strong, positive attributes. They'd never heard of Calbright. So essentially, what we were telling them at that point was what, what they were thinking about, you know, because they had no basis because they'd never heard of Calbright all day. This is the first time they'd ever seen anything. And so those are the two things that really sort of stood out, other than some of the attributes of the program. And again, what we found interesting was the fact that the association with the state helped address the skepticism about free. Oh, this is provided by the state, and it was a positive association. And two, being part of the community college system almost like gave Calbright some brand sort of heft or sort of trust because everybody, a large number of our learners have actually had an experience with the community college system. And I didn't, I don't think I shared the data, but it was a really positive, most of them had had a very positive experience with the community college system. So in a way, Calbright has a bit of a halo that it's taking advantage of from the community college system. And the more that we can make that connection, I think the more successful we're going to be.
Right, and that, that, that's part of my question. Does, and I, I don't want to take up a lot of time, President Hayes, I know we're under a time limit. Maybe we can address this later, but does, does the word Calbright convey California and community college? So that when someone's doing their research and they compare it to University of Phoenix or Arizona State University, does the name Calbright jump out at them as being a California institution that's part of the community college system? Or do they think of a, a product as opposed to a school?
That's a great question, and I don't, from our research, I don't have a good answer for that question.
Yeah, so I will say that three Calbrights, when we looked at this branding work, when I was doing advanced work with the college before the leadership, the leadership, the strongest piece of the brand was the California Community College piece. And, and that, that is an important thing that we're talking about, featuring more in the way that we do outreach around it. So what this gives us an insight on, not just that, not just around the name Calbright, but what is, what information is kind of clustered around that as well? And what information can be featured in our advertising and outreach work to connect us closer to the system? So I, I just offer there, there's, we haven't yet tested out the messaging specifically around that affiliation, but this gives us the direction to do that.
Right, and, and, and I bring it up because we, we came up with the name Calbright during the previous administration, and there's been other issues with, with how things were handled initially, and I just want to, and maybe it's too late, but just throw it out on the table, is Calbright the best word or name to be using to convey who we are? It doesn't have to be answered right now.
I, I think what I would say about that is, I wouldn't jump to abandon the name, I would, but I, I definitely take your point. And I, I think the thing that we're jumping to test is how Calbright is situated in context relative to being a public institution, sort of the drumbeat around it being a part of the California community colleges, and that message being dominated in our, in our outreach activities. So I, I'll, I'll offer that as a, as a next thing for us to test before we would think about any other decision.
Member Anderson, you still have your hand up. Do you wish to have, do you have a question?
No, I've already, sorry, I'll take it down. Okay, sorry.
Thank you so much. Let me just give it a time warning. We have a, we have, we have one hour before twelve noon, and we have at least a half dozen items to get through. And so please keep your questions very succinct and your answers very succinct as well. And we are on to item five point three, which is the strategic.
I'm sorry, I just have one really quick question. I, I had raised this last time, but, you know, this difference between the Inland Empire and the Central Valley, I mean, do we have enough data so we could separate those two? If we wanted to do separate kind of marketing efforts at each of those, because, you know, I just find them to be completely different.
We're coded to the zip code level, and we clustered them together in the regional analysis largely so that we could have the appropriate representation of rural perspective students. So yes, we can break it down, and also we've oversampled rural students so that we can get a meaningful understanding of those behaviors relative to the survey data.
And we can break out Central Valley and Inland Empire. We do have enough data to do separate breaks.
Thank you for that. Laura Asher, are you, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Haynes, and it's good to see all of you again this new year. I know time is tight, so I'll, I'll move briskly and just want to let you know that I'm going to hand off to Ajita for a part of this presentation. Our purpose today is to update you on the shape the strategic vision is taking in form and substance. And this work, as you know, is directly informed by all the valuable input that we've gotten from the board as well as other stakeholders. Next slide, please. And we can go to the next one after this, actually. Thank you. So here you can see where we are in the process. We're refining the vision and starting to develop the draft. Also, that in consultation with board leadership, we've added a few weeks to the timeline, and that's the italics. This ensures sufficient time for board input, and that before we finalize benchmarks and goals, the new CFO has time to review and advise. He starts in February. And also that the vision is informed by newly emerging data on COVID's impact on education decisions for Calbright's focused learners, which we've just heard a lot about. There will be another update at the February Executive Committee meeting, which is open to all. Next slide, please. So I want to just give you guys an overview of the main elements of the report. This is not an outline, and it's not to scale, but it's how this three-year strategic vision period fits into Calbright's trajectory from launch to scale. And the main focus of the report will be the vision itself with both guiding principles and strategic goals. We're going to be focusing on those today. And I'll first share with you the proposed principles and then how the goals will be used. After that, Ajita will take you through the context and focus areas of the goal setting that's underway and which your input will help refine. Next slide, please. So these proposed principles are grounded in Calbright's founding mission, consistent with the system's vision for success, and informed by stakeholders' hopes and expectations for Calbright, including themes I think you'll recognize from the board's November work session. I'm not going to read the whole list, but I'll note that it's not in order of importance and that the last one, aligning quality and growth, is central to how Calbright is setting its goals for success. Next slide, please. So goals can serve lots of different purposes and can be set at different levels. And we've talked a lot as a group about the high-level institutional focus for the strategic vision and the goals it includes. So this question should be very familiar to you. What does success in three years look like for Calbright? It's something you've all shared your views on with me and others, and we've asked a lot of other folks as well. I'm actually going to go ahead and read through this list because it kind of speaks for itself. The goals are going to set Calbright's strategic direction for high-quality growth from now to twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-three. They'll preserve the flexibility needed to stay on course in unpredictable conditions such as we're experiencing now. They'll directly inform internal decision-making and prioritization. They'll include, but not be limited to, meeting statutory milestones. And they assume a base of stable-state funding at fifteen million dollars per year through twenty-twenty-three. And you'll note that is the number that was in the governor's just-released budget. And now I'm going to hand off to Ajita, who's going to go deeper into the goal-setting work. Next slide, please. Ajita?
So I'll go through this briefly. Mainly what we wanted to highlight, this is, people talk all the time about this idea of a K-shaped economic recovery. And it's really meant to illustrate that the experience in recovery will be. And it's really meant to illustrate that the experience in recovery will be very different for different types of people and beyond anything that we've already seen. And Jose's work highlighted exactly how people are thinking about the increasingly difficult choices they have and the constraints that they feel. And so to reach into those communities, we need to recognize that education may not be top of mind amongst compounding financial and life pressures. But, and we need to sort of respect that in the process of what people are actually experiencing, both as we develop new models and how we measure our success defined against the goals and those goals are of the learner. And in the fact, when we, in the past, when we have past stationary periods, our focus populations really lacked access to those public options, to those quality educational opportunities. And that gap, as we know, was typically filled by really low-value providers that were able to market hard and reach quickly and enroll students. Next slide, please. Notably, we all know about the enrollment declines at institutions. But to put it into focus, this is who we are competing with to reach adult students who aren't turning to community colleges and why we're positioning Calbright as a part of this larger community college system. Because we're gearing to bring more of these students, not just into our institution, but into the system as a whole, with a focus on serving them well and building awareness in and trust in what the California community colleges have to offer. It is how we learn and support our institution and our other sister institutions to build and support new markets of learners that are critical for our growth, both as a college and as a system, in the face of aggressive targeting, marketing of learners that should be supported through a public sector option. The alternative for them being a costlier option and perhaps worse, a riskier option. That students are more likely to carry higher debt levels, less likely to complete and face lower prospective earnings as a result of the alternative. Next slide, please. So a quick preview of the focus, the goals, focus areas that we have. We are talking about three things. Growth for the college, a central role of collaboration, which we've highlighted throughout this day, and how we build the college as well as what it does while growing and collaborating. So first, to focus on growth. The idea being that we are talking about programs that are connected to credentials that fit together in different ways to position learners for different roles. And I like to analogize this to Lego pieces that can make different shapes, but by design are very different from conventional programs and definitions. The focus being on quality. This idea that what we are seeking to do is to become best-in-class. And that means not just putting our content online, but working with our motivated and creative faculty to revolutionize the way we teach and the way we support. And that's based on what we know works for adult learners. The other piece is a focus on learner success. And that we are in, while we are in the final stages of evaluating specific goals, which Lauren mentioned, the focus of the goals will be ambitious, they'll be data-informed and sustainable as we keep and hold both pieces of growth and quality in each of our hands. It is informed by the experience in startup mode and the implications of new info that Jose has highlighted and also is present all around us in terms of the circumstances of Calbright's focused learner population as well as the state's economic outlook. We are basing that assumption on stable state funding and that we are achieving learning and improving as we scale up. And just as important as having those specific goals for student outcomes is how we reach them. And the focus on collaboration, next slide, gets us there. So with this institution, California is actually leading. And there are very few examples and data sources that exist that are comparable to what we're trying to do here. So we are looking at and beyond available data as we set our goals. Perhaps the most analogous example is, and the most relevant example, despite some differences, is Western Governors University, largely because it was built from the ground up like Calbright. And to give a relative sense of where we are against those benchmarks is that we've actually seen nearly as many graduates in a year and a half as they had seen in four years. In our goal setting, what is most important is that we are keeping that strategic approach to growth that keeps us focused on quality first. We also want to point out that it's very important to take note of what's missing from this conversation. So that what we are measuring is also what matters to our Calbright model, that we are capturing more for this population that's currently being measured, largely because we will establish, need to establish benchmarks that better fit the Calbright model. And specific examples of this are time to completion that's tied to students' self-paced goals versus goals that are defined in a particular term window. And labor market outcomes that reflect a number of different potential outcomes for learners. Next slide. Last part, and you'll hear me say this to the point at which you might get sick of it, but collaboration is the core value. We're building it into the DNA of the college. It's, the reason is because it actually demonstrates exactly how we add value as we reach our goals. And it is internally focused and externally focused. Internally, we think about it in things like how we establish statutory governance. And externally, how we work with the rest of the system aligned with statewide, regional and local partners. That's very much about solving these shared challenges. And I know that sometimes that abstraction can be difficult. I just want to lift up a quick example of what we mean when we say collaboration. You know of our work in Bakersfield and Compton. Today, we'll be talking about the work in other districts. But we're also diving in deep with leaders statewide and in critical regions. So working with America's Job Centers or these local one-shops that can add to their menu of options for displaced workers by assessing the skills that someone already has and offering targeted training for good jobs that are in that area or that can be accessed remotely. And the second being helping filling gaps in training opportunities for good public sector jobs at the statewide level, which needs to better reflect the population that they serve. Next slide. And lastly, these are ones that I am also acutely focused on and are critical to that holding those two pieces around quality and growth together, which is the operations are what is going to underpin our ability to grow in size and quality. And over this period that we're talking about relative to the vision. And so the focus on capacity and adding capacity as our resources allow and as our enrollment grows of faculty and staff hired to scale those programs, designing again with a focus on quality, teaching and learning and support, user experience and the research and data and analytics that actually drive us to build, to improve and to more rapidly expand. Next slide. Last thing I'll say, because I know that we are quite short on time, is I'll just point to the mark on accreditation. The reason, the reason for this kind of a strategic approach where we are managing and growing in accordance with scale is also because through that timeline, timeframe, we achieve important milestones that help us actually unlock additional resources for our students that can help make that opportunity real against all the constraints that we've talked about. And so a key factor in that is accreditation and our simultaneous evaluation for eligibility for federal student financial aid, which will cover a lot of the opportunity costs that individuals have as they think about returning to school, especially as they exhaust their unemployment benefits. And we see that rebounding of enrollments. I think the most important thing here is we are very committed and focused in accelerating our pace to accreditation, largely to ensure those conditions are met that will set us up to be able to rapidly expand enrollments by preserving and also preserving all of the future educational opportunities that students can have after they transition from Calbright. Next slide. I'll stop there because it was a lot of rapid-fire information and we're happy to entertain some questions around it. Why don't we, why don't we do that?
I just have a comment. I thought that the stat you mentioned about how we're doing vis-à-vis the Western Governors University was a really important one. And if it could be incorporated into sort of the one-pager that Trustee Hall was talking about, not just stats, but comparisons, because that's a really, that's compelling and effective. And maybe adding to that fact sheet, a couple of talking points like that that can help us as we go out into the world. You know, that kind of thing really contextualizes and puts in a really great framework that Calbright is succeeding. And the way you boiled it down that way is really helpful. And I also want to underscore member, Trustee Hall's point about how we have to undergird the Calbright name with something that says that it's academic and a university. But in the interest of time, that's a whole nother topic for a whole nother time. But I think it's important and the research bore that out.
And we are working, the narrative document and the executive summary that we're working on for the vision is something that the board can take in individually in their conversations that you all are having as a tool for those conversations. So we see it serving that purpose as well. I think you're on mute, Pam.
Sorry, we have a question from Trustee Tarasova.
Thank you. It's not a question, but more of the small commentary. I just wanted to reemphasize how excited I am to see the goal of collaboration to include student representation in governance. Student voice is definitely vital in the most decisions that are made at every college board to ensure that decisions are student-centered and, to be frank, to avoid mistakes. Because who knows better than students, what will help them in their success at the institution? And hiring of the student engagement specialist is a much-needed and right step in this direction. So I'm looking forward to more work in this direction.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? We're going to, we're going to take public comment at this time. Is there any, or Sally?
I don't see any public comment, President Haynes.
And I was remiss on the last item on the learner analysis. Was there any, was there any comments that you saw on that, public comments that you saw on that item?
No, I did not see any public comment.
Oh, saved by that. Thank you so much. I, I do, and I don't have questions. And I, there will be another opportunity at our, at our February meeting to delve deep, more deeply into some of these issues. I do want to, so that, we're going to, we're going to take up those two items that have been moved further on. But we are now at section six, which is the constituency group reports. And I just want to note that, an addendum that was added was submitted by the, a preliminary sunshine proposal was submitted by Calbright's Faculty Association. And that's toward, at the, at the back of the presentation or in addition to the presentation that we're going to hear. The board will be considering this proposal as well as Calbright's sunshine proposal as part of its February Executive Committee meeting. So we're not going to be discussing what's in that sunshine proposal here. But it will be, it will be presented in February. And obviously, all board members are invited to attend that meeting if they so choose. And with that, I'd like to have our Calbright Academic Senate President, Mr. Stewart, present your report, please.
Hello, President Haynes, members of the board, and my fellow colleagues from Calbright Community College and guests that are attending today. My name is Michael Stewart, and I am the president of Calbright's newly-formed Academic Senate. Next slide, please. I just want to tell you about our faculty. I know that we're pressed on time, so I've heard you state that a few times. I want to be cognizant of that.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll slide through this, yes. As an instructor, I know exactly what time means in the classroom. So I just wanted to introduce our faculty to you. We have our first founding faculty, which is Elizabeth Biddlecombe. She's in information technology. Shamilah Johnson, she's a counselor. Henry Metcalf is a counselor also. Ashley O'Dell is in career readiness. Myself, Michael Stewart, is in information technology. We have Denise Tamal, who is a counselor, and Julian West, who is also in career readiness. And I want to give a special shout-out to Cindy Carney, who has stepped in and helped us out in a one-year fulfillment role to help us in a part that we were missing, a faculty, and that actually left. And that's in health, information and technology. So right now, we have seven full-time faculty and one person who was in there helping us as a full-time faculty. And I just want to explain some of the achievements to date that your faculty at Calbright have achieved. So we've developed new content in our IT program. We've incorporated a reading, writing and math component in the studies of program and the courses so that we will address the reading and writing and math components that's required in a lot of the educational processes. We've developed a new career readiness course. We've implemented career coaching. And we've created and delivered our first career development workshop through Career Services, participated in academic hiring committees. And our first full-time faculty will be sitting on the committee to hire another full-time faculty. That's a huge achievement in Calbright right now in our growth, especially in our infancy. So I just wanted to express that. We developed processes and provided feedback and integrated student support model. And we've also collaborated to improve procedures for student outreach. And we're in the DEAC accreditation process and content, which is actually, again, huge for our academic, our academic senate. And training and curricular implementation and competency-based education. So we're now being trained in that. We're learning that, we're understanding that. And Calbright also, as an academic senate, we are now sitting and participating on our government's committee in the college. So the outside faculty that was sitting on those committees have now been relieved by our own Calbright staff, which is now, again, is a huge accomplishment. So our faculty is working super hard for our students. We are dedicated and we're motivated. And we also understand that Calbright is a different college. And our faculty is a different sort of faculty. We're not the average faculty. We're dynamic. We're growing as the college grows and we move as the college grows. Just like in my presentation, I'm shortening up because I know the time is of essence. So if we could move to the next slide, please. I just want to explain some of the areas of the academic and professional matters that Academic Senate participates in, in case of some people out there do not know that. So Academic Senate acts on behalf of the faculty as an official representation on curriculum matters, policy and development and implementation, chairing and sitting on committees, serving on task force and advocating before policymakers such as yourself. And the next slide. Okay, so here's where it starts to get like 30,000 feet of information. So we're not going to go into that, but we're our 10 plus one. And a 10 plus one means that we have policies that develop and implement matters like curriculum, grading policies, standard policies regarding student presentations and success, and we are student-focused. We want students to come to our meetings, to sit with us, to talk with us so that we can understand what they're going through as a student so that we can help them gain better success as they go through Calbright. Processes for our program review, faculty roles and involvement and accreditation, which I spoke of earlier, and a few other things. So I'm not going to bore you with all these details. And we'll move on to the next slide. Again, we're at 30,000 feet. So these slides, these next few slides, will talk about what Calbright does with Title V. And since, again, we're kind of stuck on time, as an instructor, I'm going to leave the board with some homework. So you have some take-home information that you could read at your leisure because I know we all have a lot of time on our hands. So the next three slides just talk about Title V, the governance, and what that is for the Academic Senate. So that is the end, in a nutshell. Tried to speed it up for you again, President Haynes, because I think four times you said- I think four times you said, talk about time and I want to be cognizant of time management in our first presentation to the board. So our thing today was just to introduce ourselves. We are in our infancy, but we are getting larger. We're getting stronger and we will grow as the college grows. We are here to support Ajeeta. We're here to support the growth of this college. And we're here to make sure that we can do our part to make sure that we get accredited and that we are successful because if we're successful, our students are successful.
Well, I'm going to start this just by saying thank you so much. We are delighted and I can hear your enthusiasm and your support for Calbright. And so hopefully that you will take the message back to your colleagues, to our faculty, to our classified and to others who are working on building a new college and a, a, a new way of training and working with our adult learners across the state. So again, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, and you're welcome. And I thank you actually just for being here for us and for everybody on the board that stepped up and made this happen and is helping the school. We really appreciate it. Thank you for that.
Very good. I, I do want to allow my colleagues if there's, if there is any, I see your hand, Jolena, please.
Michael, thank you so much for joining Calbright, for taking a leadership role at this particular juncture and for your presentation today. I want you to know, we are all rooting for our faculty and we are here to help you achieve the goals and vision that we have for Calbright College. So keep up the good work and let us know how we can help.
Thank you very much for that.
Okay, I'm not certain if we're, if we're, um, made up any time. I'm hoping we made up a little bit. But I do want to go now to our, one of our action items. It's 4.4, the report on the audit of financial statement and reports on compliance. Again, this is an action item and we have Ms. Stahlheber to present on this item.
Good morning, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, members of the board of trustees and the public and staff who've joined us. Today, we're going to have Clifton Larson and Allen, our auditors, present our 2019-20 financial audit report. And today we'll have David Robidek, who's our principal auditor, along with Heather McGee, who is our engagement director for our audit. Thank you.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Heather and I are both with Clifton Larson Allen. And this is our second year. They go by fast, working with Calbright College. In fact, I, I look back at our proposal not that long ago and we were still, you know, calling you California online community college districts. So our terminology has already changed. You know, just listening in on the last 10 minutes reminds us is, you know, why we were excited about, you know, working with you all from the beginning. It's, you know, a lot of times, you know, you know, for, for years, you know, we, we spend our, our audit effort and institutions have been around for a long time and structured and a, and a lot of legacy there, which is great, right? We like, we like that, a lot of stability. But over the last few years, we, we have started to work with, you know, organizations that are, you know, that are entrepreneurial in nature, either why it's either through new programming within an institution that exists or, or startup organizations altogether in the for-profit space. Um, and in this case, within the, you know, the governmental or community college space. So it is, you know, to us, that's a lot of fun. We enjoy it. And it's been, it's been a great couple of years. You know, the financial statements so far themselves are pretty straightforward. Um, as you all know, a lot of the compliance requirements that apply to community college in the state of California aren't, aren't there yet for Calbright because of the nature of your operations to date. Um, and so, um, and really, you know, we're issuing an audit report as of June 30th, 2020. That's already six months ago, you know, an organization like yours, things change fast. And so, um, you know, that, that even the results there are a little bit stale, I'm, I'm sure. So again, you know, a pretty straightforward presentation here. And, uh, and with, with that, I'll turn it over to Heather, who, who leads the, the project team to, to, to highlight a few things. Um, and then certainly provide everyone an opportunity to ask us questions if you'd like. So go ahead, Heather.
Okay, great. Thank you, David. Um, I had a presentation prepared, but I'm also going to intense my presentation to help you with your timeline. Um, there really are three key things that those charged with governance are interested at the end of the audit. What the opinion is, were there any audit adjustments and were there any findings? So first, let's address the opinion. The college has received an unmodified opinion, which is also known in slang in the industry as a clean opinion. So when you're looking at the opinion letter, the key language that you're looking for is presented fairly in material respects. This year, we spent a lot of time with management, making sure that as the entity is evolving, that we're incorporating all the governmental standards as well as the requirements per the contracted district audit manual. So some of the footnotes have been enhanced this year. And also just getting prepared for when you have your stirs and purrs in place, what the, what that's going to look like in the future. For audit adjustments, there are no audit adjustments this year. There is a page in the supplementary information that discloses this. This is just in accordance with the contracted district audit manual. Again, that's preparing the college for as they progress in their establishment, getting those liabilities that are associated with having employees in place. And we do have one finding this year. Uh, we work with the chancellor's office to determine which compliance steps apply to Calbright. And this year it was identified, 50% law would be reviewed as well as the GAN limit. So the finding has to do with the 50% law, which really is a challenge for the college. It's in its infancy, um, getting established. So it's hard to differentiate between cost of instruction and then just the cost of establishing a new college. So the finding has been written overall with a recommendation just to continue working with the chancellor's office and communicating the status as, as the college continues to be developed. And I'll pass it back to David because there is a governance letter that we, we share with management.
Yeah, um, we, we, there are certain communications that were required to have with, with the board. There's a letter attached, I believe that was distributed ahead of time. I'll, I'll hit a couple of highlights. But in, in, in general, um, there's a lot of standard language in here because your audit results were as clean as they were. Um, so, so there's not a lot of modifications to the letter issuing. But I will add a couple of things. There, you know, accounting estimates are, are, are present in your financial statements. None of them that, that, that Calbright uses are particularly sensitive or nuanced or, or risky, but, but we are required to remind you that there are from time to time estimates that are, are done as a, as a, as a, as a, as part of the financial statement process. We, we didn't have any disagreements with management. There, there were a, a, a few uncorrected misstatements and what those are, are items that are identified either by management or by the orders through our procedures that are, are, are well below our materiality thresholds. But, but maybe just above an inconsequential threshold and, and oftentimes, you know, management, you know, through organizations decide to, to pass on those adjustments because they don't, uh, they don't keep the statements from being, you know, materially accurate. So we are required to communicate those. Those are attached to the letter. Very common to have uncorrected misstatements or past adjustments, as they're sometimes referred to as, but we are required to include those there. If, if, if we thought in our opinion, those adjustments were needed to be made in order for the financial statements to, to, to be accurate or, or, or to, to, to tell the, the, the proper story, we would have been required to make them, but because of the dollar amount, they are, they are deemed to be, you know, immaterial. And so that, 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 that concludes the, the governance communications. And in fact, our, our presentation altogether and thought we would reserve time if needed for questions. We find that from time to time, there are questions and that might be a better time, better way to spend the rest of our time together, if, if, if questions.
I appreciate that. Um, are there any questions from our trustees? I don't see any. That's a good, that's a good sign. And, and someone who used to work in the auditor general's office, I'm very pleased with how this turned out for Calbright. And so thank you very much for, for that. Um, we're going to, but we are going to take public comment at this time. Ariselli, can you, are there hands up for public comment?
No, President Haynes, I don't see any public comment requests.
All right, then, um, can I get a motion to approve in a second?
Costa to.
I couldn't hear that.
Costa to move.
Anderson, second.
Okay, Costa to move and Anderson to second. Can I get a roll call?
Phil Degard Aquinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Colin Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Alani Kounalakis.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Lasville Lobus.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
So that motion passes. Thank you so much. We are on our, one of our last items. It's 5.4, which is an information item, Working, Learning, Innovation Alliance MOU. And I believe that our CEO, President Minion is going to lead us in this one.
Thank you, yes. Um, before we dive into the item, I just wanted to share how thrilled we are to be joined in our efforts, focused not just on responding to the urgent needs we're all seeing, but doing so in a way that actually demonstrates the capacity of community colleges to lead and to innovate for public purpose, purpose in service of Californians who have the talent, but not yet the meaningful opportunity to see that realized. This is the start of something significant that will redefine the way our institutions can work together with a common purpose to solve a shared challenge and to build greater opportunity for economically dislocated Californians. This is a core part of unleashing innovation, the innovation potential of the system. And it establishes what, uh, what I would call is a multiplier effect beyond the impact of a single institution to help convert what is novel into normal and recognizing how a statewide district like Calbright can honor and leverage the role that districts and campuses and regions play in economic development towards building those scalable solutions. So we are ready to play a shared leadership role that can leverage what we bring to the table for the system, whether it's in, um, to enhance the impact of collaborative efforts through thought leadership, technical support, partnerships and operational R and D efforts. And I am honored to be joined by three chancellors that we have here today doing remarkable work across very diverse areas of the state. And I'll turn things over to Tamika, who will walk us through the rest of the item. Thank you.
Thank you, President Minion. The Worker, Working Learner Innovation Alliance was formed through conversations with leadership, with the leadership of Calbright, Foothill Deanza, Community College District, Kern Community College District and San Diego Community College District and Coles Community College District chancellors around the need for the community college system to be as responsive as possible to the needs of dislocated and stranded workers, particularly given the economic challenges that we face recovering from the pandemic. This MOU memorializes these past conversations over the last few months with several thought, thought leaders in the system on how we can leverage our local networks to better serve new markets of adult learner, learners and remove barriers to access persistence and completion. It also allows us to advance the next stage of our work and identify a set of activities under the alliance. So the Working Learner Innovation Alliance MOU reflects again, a shared vision and commitment to a collaborative approach in helping working and disconnected adult learners gain access to educational and career advancement opportunities. As a key statewide operational partner, Calbright will join forces with four local districts to develop, test and implement innovative skills-based strategies for economically dislocated adult learners in California. In our discussions, we identified some areas of opportunities for collaboration, including conducting research and development on equity-based enhanced technological solutions and innovations, connecting employers, colleges and students by creating an infrastructure for a statewide employer hub, complementary to and synergic with local districts, regional employer networks as well. Engaging in policy advocacy, equity and quality assurance for competency-based programs. Together, this partnership will build, will bring to scale the capacity of the system to build an equitable economic future by leveraging the strength of local districts, regional networks to advance its equity mission. And I'm pleased to introduce now three of our four chancellors who are able to join us today. Judy Miner from Foothill Deanza Community College District, Tom Burke from Kern Community College District and John Weiss Finney from Coles Community College District. They're here today to share their thoughts on the Working Learner Innovation Alliance MOU and why collaboration for working adults and economically dislocated workers is so important, given our new economic conditions. So we'll start with Judy Miner.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for inviting me to present today. This is really exciting to be working with Calbright because the college is entering a partnership that we began with Nexus Edge, a platform that provides curriculum in a variety of areas for online training that is supported by strong workforce. Also working with Nova Works, which is the local workforce board for San Mateo County and Northern Santa Clara County. The Silicon Valley Leadership Group Career to College Program that has been in operation for a couple of years to help find internship and employment opportunities for the 28 community colleges that are part of the Bay Area Community College Consortium, serving 500,000 students, offering 200 unique CTE programs. So to now have Calbright helping us on a statewide level in identifying employers that could possibly not just partner with Foothill Deanza, but the colleges that we're working with throughout the greater Bay Area. I should also mention, because this is really a great fortuitousness of opportunities. Foothill Deanza was granted one of the opportunities to do a, an intercession project as part of the trustee fellowship program that has been going on since spring of last year. And the goal that we are working on is to increase the number of underrepresented students, particularly African-Americans and multiracial students who get jobs in the areas of study, uh, the fields of study that they have with us at Foothill Deanza. We've identified nine areas that the Centers for Excellence data revealed to be very, very undersupplied, greatly in need of persons. And these are nine areas where Foothill Deanza have particularly excellent preparation programs. So to be moving forward with this particular goal and assistance coming from Calbright, we very much look forward to and look forward to reporting out on progress that I'm, I'm sure we will be able to enjoy in the short term. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chancellor Miner and Tom Burke.
Good morning and thank you for inviting me today. Like Judy, we too are excited about the opportunities of working with Calbright. We are looking at opportunities to expand the pilot project that we currently have underway with Calbright. Uh, we see that as having some real potential in our serving area. We also, in Kern County, uh, in particular, we are embarking on a very aggressive a very aggressive economic diversification effort. And I see that Calbright can play a major role in that effort as well with regards to workforce development in new economic areas of economic opportunity. So again, I thank you and, and look forward to continuing our work with Calbright.
Thank you, Chancellor Burke. And now we have Chancellor Wise Finney.
Thank you and good morning, Board. It's good to be a part of your meeting today. I just want to second the words said by Judy and Tom. This is an exciting opportunity for the Coast District. And I think it's exciting for the entire state of California. So this is really, really good. The, the thing that I think we all realize, and I've heard several times, is that the current economic downturn due to the COVID pandemic really brought us a different circumstance than we had seen with past situations. The normal enrollment gains never materialized this time. And I think for a large part because a lot of working learners found that they had to really prioritize their economic well-being above their educational goals. Even those who felt a need to get retraining to return to school found that they just couldn't do it in this environment. And I think the timing of this initiative really highlights what the power of California can do moving forward. So I'm excited to have the Coast Community College District as a part of this alliance. In Orange County, our tourism, travel and entertainment industries have been hit particularly hard. And I think the opportunity we have, as has been mentioned, is to link our regional network of employers to a statewide network through this initiative. Right now, we've been working with some key core groups here. One is called the CEO Leadership Alliance of Orange County, which is a reasonably new group, but through that work, we've become connected to a firm called Alterix, one of the national international leaders in cybersecurity. And we're looking at some very exciting internship opportunities there. We're also partnered with our strong workforce alliance, the Los Angeles, Orange County Regional Consortium, and with the Coast Adult Ed Consortium, which has brought a lot of non-credit learners to our district in recent years. So the WLIA framework, I think really at core allows us to link those local and regional networks to a statewide network. And I think that's where the leveraging power of this is going to be. So very exciting and thank you for letting me be a part of this meeting this morning.
So I want to thank you all for, for coming and sharing your excitement. I, I can, and I know my colleagues will, will have other things to say. But as someone who started at a community college, but then had to leave and get some training to get a job, and that training allowed me to stay 20 years with benefits and it allowed me to go back to school to get my degree. I truly understand the, the, the relationship between the world of work and the world of education. They don't have to be mutually exclusive. They can be complementary. And for many of our, many Californians, they, it has to be that way, given their economic circumstances. So I too am excited about this alliance and I think there is a lot to learn. And I'm hoping that you will come back as things progress and talk to us about the lessons that you're learning, both with the challenges and with the opportunities. So with that, I want to find out if any of my colleagues have questions or comments on this particular area.
I have a question. It's not necessarily in terms of this area, but since we have three chancellors with us, I wanted to know just very quickly, in 2021, as, as the Board of Trustees for Calbright, but also as the Board of Governors, what is, what can, how can we best help you in the next six months?
I'm happy to chime in. Continue to support the advocacy for increased-based funding and to protect the resources that we do have in support of our students. They are on the front lines and so many of our students are directly impacted by COVID infection because of the communities from which they come. And clearly, the pandemic has amplified the inequities that already exist in our system. And just a giant thank you for your leadership on the equity agenda. That, that is really huge for us and, and we're so proud to be in a state that stands so explicitly for the work that we're doing.
I would, I would add that getting greater flexibility on the regulatory front, as well as with the proposed budget coming forward, to be able to have greater flexibility with those resources would be also extremely helpful in advancing all of the chancellor's offices initiatives.
And I would second all of that and just say that I'm very appreciative of the attempt to use Calbright to really be an incubator and to help try ideas and pilot them. And hopefully then the rest of us can learn as well. I think that's just such a valuable mission to support and encourage you to continue on that path.
Thank you all. And what I would say is please share that perspective of Calbright with your colleagues there. Because that's a critical part of what Calbright's intentions in terms of even legislation was to act as a catalyst and really try some things that haven't been tried before. And we, and we need your support in doing that and your partnership in doing that. So thank you so much. Are there any other questions or, Tom?
Yeah, hi. Thanks to all three of you for really stepping up and participating with Calbright. I think it's really important and I'm just delighted to see it happening. I had a particularly question for Chancellor Miner. The, you said that you are kind of representing the consortium of all the Bay Area community colleges. Are, are they all going to be in some way involved with this project or is it, is it just your district?
Well, I've had conversations with Rock Foltenhour, who heads up the Bay Area Community College Consortium, because I think there needs to be a more intentional and thoughtful partnership between that organization and the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, which has been working on connecting community colleges with employers. And so a lot of this is about, you know, how, how do we come together and actually put together action plans that go beyond, oh yes, we're interested in, wouldn't this be nice? And so we've been fortunate at Foothill Deanza to, to play a leadership role in the Bay Area in a number of ways. And so I see that taking shape in, in the coming year. We have been, Foothill Deanza has been part of a number of regional partnerships that have occurred under the strong workforce programming. So we have led some, we have joined some things about equity and tech. We were part of the leadership group along with College of San Mateo for Amazon Web Cloud Computing to get nine colleges in the Bay Area to participate, have their students trained, get certification. So I think we're trying to be as opportunistic as we possibly can. This is a huge lift, which is why we're so happy to have Calbright in representing a statewide effort and an area that, you know, is just beyond the bandwidth of any one of us to be able to do. And, you know, yeah, this has been a rocky start in terms of some of our colleagues in the system. And, you know, those of us on this call had our own concerns about diversion of dollars from what we would consider mainstream efforts that we were doing. But there's more than enough work to go around and I think, I, I want to do a shout out for Ajita. I think her leadership is helping move Calbright in a very different direction. And we appreciate that. The conversations that we have had with her clearly respect the work that is already going on and has been going on in the districts. So I, you know, I'm hoping that that's actually a part of the message that we can get, we're not in competition. And, and that's a hard one to do. And, you know, for, and for those of us who've been in the system for a long time, I mean, this is my 42nd year as a community college administrator, 33 of them in the Foothill Deanza district. There are cultural shifts that have to go on as well. And the pandemic has certainly demanded more of us in a faster timeframe. And I, I, I think we're rising to the occasion. And again, by, by working more together, I think we really can, can move the needle, especially for our underrepresented populations.
That's so gratifying. Music to my ears. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Member Anderson, you have your, you have your hand up. Do you have a question?
Yes. Well, I have a comment. As member Epstein, Epstein pointed out, you know, the collaboration with all three of you is so exciting. And I would just add or enhance on what the chairwoman said. And that is that as you talk to your colleagues, also talk to the elected officials in your local community, because I think, you know, the message that we're collaborating and under the leadership of Ajita, I think you're seeing that it's a new direction. And so any help that you can give us with those members of the Senate, of the Assembly in your jurisdictions would be greatly appreciated.
Great. Are there other questions? And if they're not, then I would go to public comment.
I just wanted to again, thank my three colleagues and also just wanted to thank the California Community College Foundation, who's helped us coordinate the group and the input that we've received from the statewide chancellor's office, particularly Marty Alvarado and Shanny Weber, as well as the ASC, who have also provided input. So just, I also wanted to not, I would be remiss if I didn't mention those folks who have been helping us move the stuff forward.
Thank you for that. Ariselli, is there public comment on, on this item?
No, President Haines, I'm not seeing any public comment.
Okay. Then we will go to public forum where any, anyone in the, the participating in the audience can bring up any issues. So do we have, do we have any comments in, in public forum?
President Haines, I'm not seeing any public comment request.
Okay, then we are at item eight, which is a motion to adjourn. Can I get a motion?
I'm going to move it, but I, but I do want to complain a little bit that when President Haines lays down the law and timing, everybody listens. And I was president and I tried to get people to go more quickly. Nobody paid attention. So whatever magic you have, keep it going.
Thank you.
And I want to warn trustee Haines that, you know, the board comments, that's where things really went wild. So for later today, I just want to give you forewarning because everyone went bananas during board comments during Tom's tenure. So that will be the true test of your mettle at the end of the committee meeting.
I, I, I hope I can withstand the next, the next meeting. But I did, but this is wonderful because it'll, it will allow you to have about 30 minutes to go to bathroom breaks and whatever else you may, may need to nosh on something. So are we, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay. All in favor? We don't have to do a roll call vote on this one. All in favor. All right, then I will see you all at 12:30. Thank you so much.